And then we are ready to begin.
This is President Mike Romer. I will call the meeting to order and request a roll call.
And the time is 6:42. Director Dan Ziger?
Here.
Director Hassler?
Here.
Director Jex?
Here.
Director Jorgens?
Present Romer.
Here. And I will incorporate the Pledge of Allegiance that we said about an hour ago. We will ask for public comment for the closed session items.
And we have one attendee, so the public comment is now open on the closed session items. We do not have any hands raised.
So we will close public comment and adjourn to closed session.
The time is 6:43.
We're ready to begin and the time is 7:13.
This is President Mike Romer. I will call the meeting to order. Ask for a roll call.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Hassler.
Here.
Director Dicks.
Hi.
Director Jorgen.
Hi.
President Romer.
Hi. There's nothing to report from the closed session action. Uh, we s- announcements, six, 6.1, brief information only reports related to meetings attended by a director at district expense. Nothing to report?
Nope.
6.2, questions and informational comments from board members and staff. 6.3, communications received.
We received one communication from Nick Warrenoff.
The record reflect, I read it. 6.4, fire chief updates. Finance report?
Good evening, directors. I have a brief finance report this evening. We'll start with the strike team reimbursement. The receivable, strike team receivable for fiscal year '24 is $891. It represents one invoice. And the estimated strike team receivable for fiscal year 2025 to date, uh, the receivable is 1.2 million. We have received payments of $416,000, so the net receivable outstanding is $860,000. Fiscal year '25 represents estimated strike team activity to date, and we received $192,000 in payments in the last three weeks. Next slide, please, Marcia. Tunnel East Bay Hills financial update. The project bu- budget for the financial, uh, Tunnel East Bay Hills grant was $6.3 million. We've invoiced to Cal Fire through September 30th, $5.1 million, and we've received payments from Cal Fire of $2.9 million. The outstanding receivable to date is $2.2 million, which represents the amount of the third quarter '24 invoice. We also have expenses that have been, that we have paid but have not yet invoiced Cal Fire in the amount of $843,000. So the total expenses outstanding are $3 million. The third quarter '24 invoice was submitted on October 31st and has been approved by Cal Fire and the payment is in process. Total expenses to date on the grant are $6 million, which is 94.2% of the total budget. Next slide, please. Treasury bill update. The district now has $11,115,000 invested in treasury bills. The treasury bill maturity is, um, written below, and the staff will, uh, project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when treasury bills mature. Next slide, please.
Rates are going down.
Other items. Transition plan is in place for the interim fire chief. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Human resources update.
Good evening, directors. The battalion chief promotional examination was hosted on December 10th. One candidate tested and was placed on the eligibility list. The eligibility list is good for two years. The fire marshal oral board and second round interviews were conducted in late November, early December. A conditional offer was extended to the top candidate, and the candidate is currently working through the background process. A firefighter paramedic recruitment will be released tomorrow for the purpose of establishing an eligibility list. Chief Wannaker's last day with the district is December 30th, and Fire Marshal Isaacs will assume the role of interim fire chief on December 31. This concludes the report.
Fire marshal update.
Good evening, directors. Brief fire marshal update. Uh, we're still doing chipping in December, but we have seen a decrease in the number of chipping requests as we go into the holiday season. Um, right now I have the team, uh, finishing up on any o- uh, open cases still, and then we do, we take the month of December to do, uh, a self-reflection to look back on what we've accomplished this year, areas that we can improve on, and we're preparing the year-end report that we'll present, um, in January, uh, to the board. We're also working with our software, uh, company, Goga, to implement new software systems. Uh, we'll start in January. Uh, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Tunnel East Bay Hills fuel break project update.
Uh, good evening, directors. Another, uh, brief update on this. So we've, uh, have 409 piles established that I'm working with our prescribed fire coordinator, Dennis Rain, to get Crew 12 out and to start, uh, burning on these piles as we close out the grant. The grant closes, or is supposed to be completed by March 15th of 2025. Uh, my plan is to have everything, all the funds expended and all the work completed by, uh, no later than March 1st. The heavy lifting of the grant has been completed. Uh, we're down to Crew 12, Confire Crew 12, working, uh, creating piles and burning piles when they can. Uh, we did some pile burning today. We were planning on tomorrow and Friday to burn, but, uh, air quality shut us down, so Crew 12 will be out Thursday and Friday. Uh, putting paper on the established piles and, um, doing a little more trimming and thinning in areas that needed and creating some new piles. But the big plan for the winter is to get those piles burned. Um, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Home hardening grant program update.
Hi, good evening, directors. Uh, since, uh, July 1st of this year, uh, 229 residents, um, have applied for the grant since we reopened, uh, the applications for the ship direct program. 198 orders have been shipped to homeowners totaling $105,829. 22 orders that were picked up from, uh, return material, nine new orders, uh, of gutter glove, um, since 121624. And, uh, uh, total expenditures to date for our current fiscal year, $110,685. This concludes, uh, our gutter glove update.
Questions from the board?
Good job.
Operations?
Hi, good evening, director. Directors, uh, I'll be giving tonight's operational update, uh, briefly since the last time that we met. I want to focus on the incident that occurred on Friday, December 13th, at approximately 1225 hours. Um, that, uh, that involved Engine 43 while responding to assist in the mutual aid request with the city of Oakland, uh, for a single vehicle accident on westbound Highway 24, um, near the Highway 13 exit. Uh, Oakland Engine 19 arrived on scene first and reported a solo vehicle accident in the, uh, in the center divide area. Next slide. And, uh, go back one more, please.
A little bit of a delay.
All right, so.
There.
Okay, so I want to take you, uh, on this. So, uh, this is traveling in that direction. This is in the vicinity of the accident. Um, and, uh, the center divide is to the left, uh, heading westbound. And, and just to paint the picture, um, we count the lanes, uh, starting from the left to the right, uh, left being one, two, three, and so on. Um, Engine 43 was directed to provide as a blocking unit for Engine 19, uh, positioning to cover the center divide in lane one. Uh, shortly after arrival, a passenger vehicle traveling westbound on Highway 24 struck Engine 43 at freeway speeds. Uh, Engine 43 crew members were seated inside the, uh, apparatus at the time of impact with code three lights on and the directional, uh, for incoming traffic to, to divert to the right. Next slide. Additional resources were immediately requested for patient care and scene safety, including a rolling roadblock from CHP. Um, this slide here, uh, is, uh, it paints the picture as to the position of the engine and, and where the, uh, the vehicle collided with, uh, MOF the Engine 43. Yes, sir.
Is the colliding vehicle in the center divider?
Unmit your microphone, please.
It looks as if it's in the center divider here.
On the left-hand shoulder, uh, into lane one.
Because that's where it collided?
Yes, sir. They were in the fast lane, headed westbound. The engine was blocking the fast lane. The car struck the engine from behind, essentially submarined underneath it. You can see how the force of the impact raising the rear wheel slightly off the freeway, uh, didn't impact the actual center divider. But they're, they're in the center of the freeway, which made this call particularly challenging. Cause you, you get the fastest traffic, you get people whipping around the outside, uh, of that, uh, of that turn downhill, uh, and then generally traveling at speed.
But they're not in the, the fire truck's in the lane, the cars in the median, you know, out of, between the lane.
On the shoulder, yes, sir. I mean, I would assume that that was, I'm sorry, if that was your question, that assume that's the car attempting to avoid the engine. They didn't have a lot of places to go at that speed, and they, they struck at a high enough speed, full airbag deployment, an awful lot of energy to put a car that far beneath an engine. Significant lower extremity injuries to, to one of the occupants of the vehicle. Uh, that was a high-impact crash. Uh, a fire engine weighs 43,500 pounds. In other words, it has an awful lot of lug nuts. Um, the crew were in the engine, in their seats, seat belted, and the, they saw the impact occurring, so they were prepared for the impact and still suffered injuries despite all the buffering effects. So a 4,000-pound car at 70 miles an hour generates an awful lot of kinetic force.
What is the condition of our firefighters now?
Uh, Lucas. Yeah, so, uh, two firefighters were transported to the hospital, um, following the, following the collision, um, for, for, uh, minor injuries. And, uh, just as of today, uh, all personnel have returned to full status. Uh, so we're very grateful for that, of course, for our fire response. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, certainly, uh, the two that were transported were tight, uh, in, in their back, fused back pain. Um, but, uh, can you go to the next slide, please, Marcia? The, the piece that I want to focus on, um, after, after, uh, certainly an update to our staff, um, that were involved in this, uh, fire engine was, uh, was after. Um, so that it's the, uh, immediately following this impact, um, our staff did a, a quick systems check, um, and then went to work and, and provided, uh, immediate patient care to the two occupants of this vehicle that, that collided with our fire engine. I think that this, uh, summarizes, um, the selflessness that, that we have of our, of, of what we're doing, um, and, and focus on the work that needs to be done. Uh, these people, uh, these occupants were transported to the trauma facility, um, just as soon as, uh, as soon as the ambulance arrived and delivered those patients to, to the ambulance where they were transported. Um.
Just a. Just a quick question. So, do we put, you know, this is not the first time we've had somebody coming out of the tunnel and hitting some, hitting one of our vehicles. So, have we thought about things we could do to prevent that, like closing that lane of the tunnel before you get in the tunnel, for example? Or do we put out flares and cones and all kinds of fun things before, or is it just the engines the first thing they get to?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to speak, uh, out of turn, uh, and regarding this incident, it is still under investigation with CHP. And we, we continuously involve and engage CHP, um, as to best practices, uh, com- uh, coordinating, um, roadway safety for all of us. CHP, first responders, firefighters, uh, air ambulance. So, all of those, uh, are certainly in collaboration with, we communicate with them often. Um, and, uh, as a, to answer your question, yes, and, uh, there's some more details, um, that, that we will come soon after this investigation.
I think I kind of want to jump in here and suggest that any questions along this line be reserved for a future closed session.
Yes, sir. I'm just saying, to summarize, Lucas has been a leader in working with Caltrans and, uh, CHP. But we don't control the roadway, and we don't have the authority to close the roadway. That, that's a CHP and Caltrans. Lucas has worked specifically with Caltrans removing both the pusher trucks that can clear an accident, as well as the, the accident avoidance truck with the large energy absorbent pepper on it, the Scorpion. Uh, moving those from the Bay Bridge where there are several of them stationed, moving them to the Caldecott during times of inclement weather, and we see an increase. Um, to date, those haven't been successful. These are state ABCs. We have reasonably limited levers when it comes to them. Uh, and then to Director Jorgen's question about flares and cones, uh, generally speaking, we don't do that because of the safety issue of the firefighter who would have to get out of the engine, and that our, our safest bet is staying in the engine, but this is an ongoing regional problem. Uh, we've shared recently, several Confire engines and, uh, Tiller have been struck, um, with such damage that, um, major injuries to the occupant vehicle and the rigs put out of service. One of them was a brand-new $2 million truck, uh, with a 48-month delivery for the replacement. So there, there are a number of ongoing regional discussions, and as Paige and Louis Bouchard were referring to earlier, these are the sort of things we're working out regionally. But ultimately, we're on a state roadway where the state has the responsibility to close the roadway for traffic control. And we have the limited ability to do things, which is one of the reasons we bring our own blocking functions with us in the form of an extra engine. Of note, this was a mutual aid call, so that this isn't, isn't even our section of freeway. Uh, so we're in Oakland, having, on a state highway, having traveled through a state-owned tunnel. And, and we have, we have to ask in these cases. We don't, we don't have the ability to unilaterally close the tunnel.
When we are in a mutual aid situation, though, does that affect, uh, our exposure to potential insurance deductibles, uh, self-insurance? Uh, you know. Tell me if I'm, if it's an abun- if I'm acting in overabundance of caution, my concern is, is that we know that in this state, anybody could file a lawsuit against anybody for anything. If this happens here, uh, I would prefer that we not make comments in public that are, could be used against us.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Do we get to sue the guy to fix our truck and fix our people?
We'll send it to our.
A claim, whatever, okay.
Carrier, and the carrier normally contacts the driver's insurance and see if there's a claim. One of the challenges we run into, not in this case, because the, the damage is minor-ish, all things considered. Most of the energy went underneath the engine and lifted it instead of striking it. But, um, the cost of replacing, uh, an engine or a truck exceeds the liability, um, that the state requires a, a driver. You're thinking normally 20 to $50,000 car, not million-dollar fire engine.
Have we thought about having our own truck that?
Did this truck be out of service?
Uh, the engine. Yeah, so, I, I know it may be surprising to see it at this point. We, we were able to put this engine back in service, uh, later the e- in, later the same evening. Um, after it, uh, passed inspections with, uh, with our, uh, hired mechanics and, uh, and, and putting a few items back in place. Um, we, we, we certainly are looking for long-term solutions of, of the repairs, but in the interim, we were able to put it back in service pending those, those replacements. Uh, most of the en- the energy lifted the engine device, crumpling the compartments.
Did Highway Patrol resell onto the scene, and did they do any investig-
See them in the picture there.
Did they do any investigation, such as finding out whether the driver was on his cellphone at the time that?
I defer to that. Investigation's ongoing. Defer to CHP for the final report. Yes, sir. Uh, that, like I mentioned, so they're, they're still conducting the investigation currently. Um, but the, but it is an ongoing investigation. We've been actively, uh, engaged with them with details and information that they've required to complete the report.
Do, do the people in the blocking truck often actually, you know, do, do we need the truck for the people? Do we need the truck for what's on the truck? Or is it just a big piece of metal that blocks the other people so they don't get hurt?
All of the above, but typically that, that additional engine is there to protect the scene, not, not to deliver the additional manpower.
So we could use a truck like Caltrans has if we wanted to?
Fire's working on, on exactly that. It, it's, it's a little more complicated, um, but they have been looking into that, given the rash of vehicle strikes they've had recently. And looking into opportunities for some version essentially of a dump truck with a lot of weight in the back and the Scorpion, uh, impact device hung off the back.
How about, how about a certain marine tank or something?
Um, harder to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a connection.
You'd have to repair the roadway every time.
You'd have to shoot them.
And just to back that up with, uh, those are the types of communications with our partners from CHP, Caltrans, and other agencies to, to lean on them for the support and, and roadway safety for our, our crew. Next slide. And this leads me to our PSA. This slide you've seen plenty of times before. We will continue to message as our PSA to notice our public to slow down, stay vigilant on the roadways, avoid distractions and be aware of our emergency response equipment on the roadways. We will continue to message this and remind people, including our own staff, while traveling to and from distances. Next slide. Changing gears, this is we had a Santa sighting. We've had many, many holiday celebrations with our crews, with our fire districts and with the community groups. This is as we delivered Santa to the Maraga tree lighting ceremony where he was met with with our crews of Station Forty One in in response to the holidays. This concludes my report. Pending any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Upcoming calendar and events. And we can go ahead and open public comment for the announcements. We do not have any hands raised or in person public comment. And we can open public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We did receive one written public comment that was included in the packet from Elaine Chow Davis. I'm thanking the firefighters for a response. We do not have any hands raised and we do not have any in person public comment. You can open public comment on the consent agenda. We do not have any hands raised or in person public comment.
Which one is it? I forgot right in which one it was. So I'd like to pull and continue item eight point ten. We could in the consent agenda. Otherwise, I would move that we approve the rest of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And with the exception of the poll eight point one zero, that is a good future discussion.
Can you can you unmute your microphone, please?
With the exception of agenda item consent agenda item eight point ten, which has been polled, do we? We have a motion and a second on the approval?
Yeah.
Maybe we have a vote.
Yep, I think Steve already seconded it.
So I have a a motion from Jorgens and second from Dan Ziger.
Okay.
Director Dan Ziger.
Aye.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
Aye.
President Romer.
Aye.
So to discuss and continue number eight, ten, right?
The next item would be to consider the the poll item from the from the agenda. There's a motion that free to consider from Director Jorgens to continue that item.
Continue means move it to next month, but I I do have. Is it okay if we ask questions now, just since there are knowledgeable people here? So I guess for me, the reason I was I feel like during the the long term financial planning, we we put sort of a million and a half in the budget for this, or we were thinking it was going to be kind of a million and a half dollars. And I understand that that's significantly less, like a third of what we now expect it to be, which is a pretty big shock. And, you know, I think we need to. I'd like to be more involved if we're going to spend that kind of money. I mean, not that a million and a half isn't a lot of money, but if we spend, you know, that kind of money, I'd kind of like to understand what it is we're getting for it. You know, why, if we aren't moving bearing walls and things like that, why it costs that much? And, you know, maybe there are things that we would want to think about, you know, the board wasn't, as I understand, involved in kind of thinking what we needed, what we know what the spec was, you know, we thought it was going to be something relatively straightforward and relatively inexpensive. And now it's turned into, you know, a big project, in my opinion. So I'd just like to understand it more.
Yes, sir. Say from my perspective, this is the absolute bare minimum project that that can accomplish the upgrades to the current common dormitory to the the current best practice for multi gender fire station having individual dorm for the individual assigned bathrooms. It's common bathrooms, et cetera, a number of things that are incomplete. The the project as it is envisioned today, in my sense, is is the minimum of what we can do to accomplish the goals that have been set forth. Should the the board want more information or to provide more scoping, there are a couple of steps. The first step would be to hold a public workshop where the board could have an open discussion. The public could have comments as well. And the board could provide direction to staff regarding what they want the project to to contain, noting that neither staff nor the board are are experts on construction, particularly public construction. So then, having established the scope of the project through that workshop, i- if the board wanted more information and wanted to be able to work with more certainty around the the proposed costs, which we don't know today because the process hasn't started. Staff with board direction and associated budget adjustment could go then retain a an expert on these things who could develop a rudimentary plan and provide not only a cost estimate, but be able to justify the cost estimate to the board at a subsequent meeting. At which point we would come, I would recommend, come back to the design bid build, something similar to the contract you see before you tonight that would move forward with whatever the project was envisioned to be, which could be what it is today, or could be something substantially different. Should the board and should the board provide the direction regarding a change of scope? In my opinion, there there is no change of scope that could be less than what we have today and accomplish the goals of converting the common dorm to individual dorms, converting some of the office space to the additional dorm that is needed to facilitate staff of six there. And while that we were at it, upgrading the kitchen, which is is getting pretty long in the tooth. With the exception of the extractor, the the current proposal excludes changes to the apparatus bay and excludes changes to the utility space downstairs. So there's not really any other areas of the station that could be segregated out of the project to reduce the the scope in in order, unless we were to bypass the kitchen, but I think that wouldn't be prudent, given the the startup costs and so forth, and that the kitchen area is going to be in need of a refresh in the not too distant future. So so that would be the appropriate step. What we haven't done here to to date, while we're unable to provide a great deal of certainty around the cost and because we don't have the plans. So there there's a chicken or an egg here. And if the board wants more certainty around that, I think it would make sense to for the board to provide concrete direction regarding the scope. And then staff to go retain an expert who could convert the scope into some rudimentary set of plans from which we could start to derive estimates. I would note that's also included in the design bid build process that was envisioned to this contract. So it is multiple routes to the same point, but but there is a good chance that we end up back at the same point, at some point next year, following a workshop and another direction from the board.
So, okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
My my recollection, I haven't looked at the numbers recently, but originally it was about a million five.
Yes, sir.
And then I think there was an uptick in that was in the less than two million.
Yes, sir.
This
There's currently three million in the budget, sir. But there we've seen significant. Remember, the original plan for this predates COVID, and so we're we've seen significant inflation in construction costs in salaries prevailing wage that we have to pay that can run as eye watering prices for for tradesmen and and other things. So the an estimate somewhere in three million dollars would sit in the budget. I think there's a good chance that it's higher than that, but we don't know because we don't have plans and therefore it's awfully hard to start estimating out the cost of the project. I would just say for public construction, public safety construction specifically, agencies in our area for new construction, which isn't exactly right, are paying on the order of sixteen hundred dollars a square foot all in for construction costs.
Yeah, because if you looked at three hundred thousand plus for architectural things, it probably is a much bigger project than what we're thinking.
Yes, sir. I would caution, not necessarily a bigger project, just a more expensive project. The 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 scope of the project hasn't changed. There's no creep here. It just the cost of building and rehabilitating public buildings, specifically public safety buildings, is is just not cheap.
So this contract, and I see the architect Alan Kawasaki is here with us. If my understanding is, this contract would provide us not only the drawings, but also does it provide the estimate of the cost of of the whole project or?
Yes, sir. And it also that would set us up with bid documents and that would also provide us with an expert retained by the district to advocate on our behalf throughout the construction project, which for those of you who are involved in the Station Forty Three project, where where we fell down several times along the way, was that the district was not properly represented during the construction process, meaning changes, change orders, unnecessary things, things that that were in many cases may very well have been unscrupulous occurred, and the district either didn't have the capacity or didn't have the expertise to recognize when things were being changed that were unnecessary. So the the contract and the reason the design bid build process has been selected as beneficial to the district is the architect is being retained not only to come up with the initial drawings from which the bid is derived, but also to continue to represent the fire district throughout the process so that when if if a architect working for the builder were to say, or the builder were to say, oh, this is wrong, this needs to be done. And that was certainly my experience overseeing the Forty Three process. Everyone can agree that something wasn't right, needed to be changed at great expense to the district, but everyone got very vague about what the source of that, something that was wrong. This process is intended to have the expert, the person who came up with the original design, representing the fire district on the fire district's payroll, essentially, so that they were working for us, not the builder, who might have ulterior motives. And so this is envisioning not only the the putting together the documents from which the process or the proposal could be bid, but providing that additional oversight so that we had an expert advocate speaking on our behalf throughout the process. I'll say just on on the Station Forty Three project, first, I just said no to everything, which might not have been the right answer, but I think it was right for that moment. But my expertise is not in construction. My expertise was reading the room and getting a sense when I didn't feel like when my 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 sense of of human behavior suggested they were about to try to pull a fast one on us. There are better ways to go about supervising multimillion dollar processes than that one.
So this contract is just to make clear, I'm saying that if we approved it, that Shah Kawasaki would be here along the whole process.
Correct. As the district representative.
As I were. Not as not in the capacity of project manager.
Two different things.
Be another another person.
Yes, sir. That as required by government code. But the distinction here is that the person who speaks the right language was involved in the drawings, knows what was intended.
Okay.
Is is at the table when things start to come in that that don't look right or smell right?
Yeah. Okay, good.
So I think that's a great process. I like that. I'm sure he he's incredibly skilled at doing that and would know when when the room is getting ready to, you know, throw stuff at us that's not good. So I don't have any problem with that, but I don't feel like I understand enough about what's, you know, somebody must have a little sketch of what we're trying to do. I assume if we got a bid for, you know, how to do the detailed architecture, we must know have at least some kind of a concept of what it's going to look like.
Yes, sir. In PowerPoint, the crew working at at Station Forty Five put together a concept that matches the the space and what we think is new. I believe it's included in the packet. What page?
But I guess the I I've heard that, you know, the number might be materially more than three million dollars. And so I'm not a construction person. I I agree, but I did just recently remodel a forty four hundred square foot condominium, which you can't touch the outside walls on. You can do anything you want to inside that. We took out a third of the structural beams that held up to a two story building. We replaced them with, you know, twelve inch by, you know, twelve inch I beams that weighed three thousand pounds. They were thirty feet long. We did material amounts of structural work, which is the expensive part usually in these things. The interior walls you change that are made of two by fours are pretty cheap. Even if you're paying two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the carpenter, it only takes so many hours to put up an interior wall. We did five new bathrooms that had incredibly expensive tiles and marble and fun things in them that I assume we're not going to put in this building. We did a kitchen that again had, you know, custom made cabinets. All the rooms had custom made cabinets. I mean, every, you know, and it was nowhere near this number. Okay. And and so you can triple the labor on how much the materials versus the labor were. You can triple the labor or whatever, which is about what the number would be, and it still wouldn't be four and a half million dollars. So and and we're not moving, as I understand it, we're not moving any any we're not doing any structural work. It's all literally interior non load bearing walls. Is that true? Because if it's not true, then it's a big deal.
Yes, sir. I I would just I would caution residential construction has no bearing on government.
Sure it does. This is this is not.
It doesn't, sir. The other thing that complicates this is that we'll be, this will be an operating functioning fire station throughout the project. So there will be a crew living and operating out of the fire station the entire time, which increases complexity and cost significantly because there are people living in the space and the the work has to occur in a way it doesn't disrupt the continuity of operations. They're also by virtue of law and I defer to district council on why those laws are in effect. Government construction is eye wateringly expensive.
We we did this during COVID with twelve feet of snow outside and on top of the roof when we were doing the load bearing, taking out the support beams and the support structure. So that, you know, all those things have supply chain issues, a lot of which are gone now, but I I get it, but if there aren't load bearing walls, I don't understand how, number one, it can take a year and a half. Because it it isn't just isn't that hard to do those things. So I guess I'd just like to understand more about what the plan is and why, what aspect of it is going to cost that kind of money? Is it the labor that costs that much? Are there unusual materials we're having to put in? Are there funny unusual codes because it happens to be not just a public building, but a fire station public building?
I think the answer is all the above, but that said, as I would refer back to previously, if 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 there is an interest in revisiting the project, we should hold a a public workshop at a later date.
But but I don't need a public workshop. I need to talk to somebody, probably our architect.
We need to hire somebody to to do that, and we can we can make a limited engagement.
Well, we can hire the architect that we think is going to do it.
We can't. We just haven't done that yet, sir. So if the board wants more information, rather than bundling it in here, we can we can do a separate engagement to to hire an expert to review the plans, come up with a detailed estimate and provide an opportunity for the board to ask someone who the district has retained, ask some questions about this, that we can certainly do that.
I I don't think it needs to. I guess it's it before we, you know, if if we went from spending three million dollars to spending four or five million dollars, that's a pretty big difference. And, you know, out of our budget, that's a lot of money. And and we're going to spend it really soon, and, you know, like in the next year or two. So it just seems that having a little bit more education, but why can't we just hire our local expert?
I'm not saying we can't, and I don't disagree at all. I'm saying that hasn't been done, so those questions can't be answered tonight. At a future meeting, that having retained someone to work on that and given them the appropriate amount of time and the appropriate information they need to spin up an estimate and be prepared to answer, give an actual estimate that we don't currently have.
Well, it doesn't. It can be a super rough estimate. It's just that, you know.
I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. We just haven't. None of that has occurred because that was envisioned as occurring as as part of this contract.
So, Mr. Outside Council, we're having a meeting. We're discussing this. And we're discussing a budget to spend on on an architect. So can we change the the to do and agree that we want to spend up to twenty five thousand dollars to have that architect come and inform us and do a rough budget for us if or whatever number we think might be in the right ballpark to have them do two weeks for the work?
I mean, the the answer in theory is yes, but obviously a contract is is a contract between parties.
No, I get that.
So there would have to be some discussions before you before you did that. But but yes, I mean, the world is your oyster in terms of things that we can mutually agree with folks about. It's just it's it's just a question of tonight, we don't have that.
Or could we could we just change this contract slightly and realizing that there are two parties to it? I get that. And say that we want a near term deliverable that's that looks like what we're talking about so that we can understand what it is.
Sir, I would suggest let me briefly, i- is there an interest from the directors on discussing and potentially changing the scope of the project? Or is that everyone's comfortable with the scope of the project? It's included in attachment A to the staff report. You can see an outline of the of the project, noting that the large open areas, the ap layer, which is not envisioned as being preworked.
I have two essential questions. Why, first of which is why does remodeling the interior of a California fire station, an order of magnitude higher than it is for any comparable? an order of magnitude higher than it is for any comparable construction anywhere else? I mean, that kind of baffles me. I've, I've got to figure out why that is. And the second thing is, is that I think we do need to be presented with several alternatives, maybe the minimum of which is satisfies our other contractual obligations and gives some alternatives. Because I think we have a fiduciary obligation to, to do this in a cost-effective manner. So, so I would say yes.
So you, I'm sorry, I missed you. So not that the board provides direction about the scope, but the board be provided with a list of alternative with associated price tags for what could be done? Is that, is that your intent, sir?
I think so.
Well, I, no. To me, the first step would, if we were just having a, you know, if we already had the consultant, I was going to ask the consultant questions. Or the architect that was going to give us an intermediate, a really early deliverable, it would be, and maybe this is impossible. But so it could, we could just change the deliverables in the contract a little bit to say that, you know, in the next, whatever reasonable period of time is for that person, you know, we only meet every so often. They could give us, you know, an estimate. And again, they're professionals. They had a, you know, they do this for a living and they, I assume, build government buildings for a living. So they have an idea what the cost scales are and things, what they think it would cost and why, roughly why? Not a 50-page thing, a four-page thing that's, you know, that just says kind of what we're working on.
What Director Romer said was fundamentally different.
I understand. But what I think, so I don't.
Let's just make it simple.
We don't need directors to be clear. The fire chief has signature authorization up to $100,000. This would not be over $100,000. So this doesn't require board action. I need, need board direction and hopefully it's a unified board direction so that staff, understanding that first meeting after the holidays is essentially a week after New Year's. So nothing will be delivered in January.
Right.
But if we have a clear sense of direction, and I restate what I think I have heard, retracting Director Romer's statement about options would be, the plan is currently envisioned with an estimate and that estimate includes a justification for why this is what it costs and why this is how long it takes. So that the board were more, was more fully informed, so that the board could then visit either the design bid build process or something else, being informed by what they're being asked to approve beyond, which I'll be the first to acknowledge, a very simple and non-explanatory sketch that's included in the current agenda.
My guess, this number, when you talk about construction management, that's typically in excess of what the architectural fee is. That helps me a little bit understand. I didn't realize that they were doing that. We, when we, on 43, when we were doing, initially, we had a real mess and we probably wasted about $3,000 of our, before we even got started. I like the idea of some professional having that expanded responsibility over and above what we would otherwise get by hiring a separate person. It would help me to understand almost like an interview if they're, if they're really, this is their estimated fee. I'd like to understand what the components of the fee are and how they're allocating that. And that might help understand that we're the board, we're a committee of the board, exactly what it is we're going to be getting and for, and what their estimate would be and what the actual end product's going to produce.
One other thing that the directors may want to consider, so one piece of this would be, it sounds like direction to the chief to within, for less than, it's sort of full authority, to bring on board somebody who could advise. And the other thing that I might suggest is you may want to consider an ad hoc committee so that, you know, because this is pretty detailed, but it's not going to fit super easily into a big public meeting. I'm not suggesting we shouldn't eventually have a full airing of the thing, but just as you're working that through, it's something you might want to consider.
I think that's a great idea.
I think we should, well, and it also could. And Director Danzinger would agree to serve on that committee. Can we form that tonight or we need to do that?
You can do that, yes. It's a motion.
Would you agree to serve on such a committee, Director Danzinger?
To an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
And we are reviewing our ad hoc committees tonight where we can add.
Better, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll be identifying ad hoc committees for 2025.
So while we have Mr. Kawasaki here, and I don't, you can, you can say, I don't feel comfortable talking right now. That's, so I get that because I don't mean to be putting you on the spot. But is what we're asking for crazy or out of line or anything? Or is it a reasonable thing to ask for?
While he's approaching, and then for Director Jex, under Section 3 compensation, there are three components of compensation broken down, showing where funds are allocated for each phase of the process.
Right.
So Directors, Alan Kawasaki.
Welcome, your reputation precedes you.
Yes, exactly.
And you're a member of the community too.
Yes.
I know that you're conscientious and committed, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I do have some expertise in this in that I am called upon by California Fire Chief Association to advise fire chiefs and fire districts on construction, even opinions about costs, et cetera. So I'm a little hesitant only because I'm not under contract. So you'll have to take this with a grain of salt, even though I have a rep, you know, this is what I do. So the chief mentioned $1,600 as a common construction cost these days.
Per square foot.
Per square foot. And that is new construction.
That's new construction.
New construction. But I would say that's on the low side based upon this we are seeing for new construction. Now, so then the question is, what, like, is it Jorgens?
Jorgens, yeah.
Jorgens said, you know, it is interiors primarily, so it shouldn't be 1,600 bucks a square foot. So what is it? Primarily, we said, in, in interior construction. We have a structural engineer on this team because, and perhaps you have had this, when you go into an existing building and you start tearing it apart, you find out things that you don't expect.
There's, there's the as-bilts and the, and the.
There are no, there are no as-bilts.
But there's also, even if you had drawings, what they actually built.
We have, we have some drawings. So part of our scope will be to piece together and as-built before we start by looking at all various kinds of drawings by various, the original architect, structural engineer called SGH that did a seismic upgrade. We also have our engineer coming out once the building is torn apart to confirm that the upgrades made by the prior SGH have been done.
Sorry, Alan, if I just clarify, the plans he's referring to from the seismic upgrade, those aren't the original plans, which we don't have. So the, what was originally envisioned, we have no record of. We know what was done at some point in the past with the seismic, but there are a tremendous number of unknowns with a station of that age that's been modified.
And so we are taking some risk by taking on your project because we really don't know exactly what we'll find. But we will, you know, work with you and with the chiefs to, part of our scope is there are benchmarks. It's broken down into phases. So you, if you tell me you want to do this contract, you're not obligated to pay me for the entire thing. Approximately one-third the way, we have a cost, first cost estimate, then there's another phase, we get another cost estimate. And then, and only then will you be saying whether you want to commit for the construction. So there are places you can say, this is, this is out of control. But what you will have is rather than a drawing prepared by in-house crew members, you will have a drawing that we give to the cost estimator, which is a professional cost estimator that does all of our fire stations. And it will include things like your obligation for the American Disabilities Act. Now, I don't think you have that in your house, nor do you have, there's a 50%, it's called the Essential Service Act, which in the California says that a fire station must primarily in structure, but even electrical systems, the ability to be operational after a major earthquake. It adds approximately 50% to the cost of normal quote-unquote construction. Prior to 1986, fire stations were built like houses. We do not do that any longer. There are also concerns not only for Americans with Disabilities Act and the ability of the station to withstand forces greater than a house, but also there are things that we have to do for the safety of the fire personnel. These add costs. So 1,600 bucks, maybe it's $1,000 for a house, I don't know. But it's at least 1,600 for new construction. And the public process, as the chief mentioned, is not, we can go to a contractor and choose them. We have to go out and there's a process to select. And there's an oversight that we as architects or construction manager have to do to make sure that what is in the contract, what we have designed, comes through. So I don't know if that, kind of in general, this is not a house. It's nowhere near a house. This is, this is a building that is to stand in case of a fire or impact of an emergency and also is to protect the fire personnel. Is there, is there something?
That is helpful.
I have a question.
I wasn't here on the board when we built 43, so I'm all learning this as I go, and that's really helpful. I have a question for Mr. Kawasaki. So you talked about the different phases that we have in the project. So the first phase I'm looking at is the schematic design.
Right.
At that point, do we get, is there an estimate attached to that?
Right.
Okay.
So, and even to get to the schematic design, the first task that my staff will do is to go in and create the as-bilts electronically. We cannot, any, we cannot design any longer with just pencil and paper. We input this into something called Revit, which is, you, you've probably heard of like CAD or AutoCAD.
Sure.
10 years ago, things were electronic, two-dimensional. Now it's three-dimensional input. So we essentially build the building on electronically before we get into the design. And also to answer, one thing that we do know is that by the code, we do know that that back facade, there's a clear story in the back facade, that will not meet code. We're going to be tearing down that back facade and you have to have individual windows, opable windows, and that has to be structurally figured out. So hence the structural engineer. So there, there's that. I mean, there's just, I don't want to explain, that's just an example of what we have to do, this more and beyond. And as a resident here, you know, what I have said to the chief is I'm going to give you a price and I'm going to be here. I can be at the site if there ever, you know, is an issue. So I just drive down the street. If you go outside, you will have to find someone who have to pay, you'll have to pay for any emergencies. I'll just show up. So I think it's going to be very economical for you.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't worried about that.
The value of your services. It's the contractor's price, which you can give us an indication of what it is, but you don't control that.
I don't, I don't control.
You understand that's what our.
And, and you will have that by professional cost estimator as we go. And you had, you can pull the stops and say, that's not what we want to do.
But, but 2,000, it's 1,800 square feet, so let's pick a 2,000 to make the math easy. And $1,600 is 3.2 million, right?
No, it's 2,800 square.
Other was, other was 1,800 that we were actually fixing. Oh, sorry.
2,800, right?
Yeah, of a 81.
Okay, you're right. Yeah, yeah, okay. So we'll call it 3,000. Times, even if it's 1,600, which you think is low, but that, doesn't that include foundations and all kinds of things?
1,600 would include foundations, which we're not going to be, we don't think, we're not going to need to do that.
And all the exterior and things, usually the interiors are, but you said there are structural.
Exterior on one side, not all four sides, but on the back side.
So does any boundary ever do modular things where, you know, you can build modular things off-site to whatever code you want to and tear off the top part of the building and just set something in?
No, it's, it's a good point. And we are doing some things where we have two fire stations right now that we're doing for Confire. One is pre-engineered, not necessarily modular, and we were able to save about 10%. But with that, there were concerns from the public because the aesthetics is not, you can't totally hide the pre-engineered aspect.
But Alan, even with those savings, what were the costs? Full, start to finish cost of that single company station in East County that was pre-engineered?
Well, you say everything, including soft costs? So about, I wouldn't say, so construction costs 1,600 bucks a square foot. Okay? But the other side, the soft costs, you add 50% to that to cover all the engineering, the permits, right? The construction manager, if you're going to have that, the architects, the surveyors, the, all the different people. And there's even some internal costs that you guys have because there's some personnel that you have to assign. It's time for the chief or whoever it is that's going to, we're going to report to.
So.
What was the number?
What's the number? For new building, for that pre-engineered building, I would say, so take 1.5 times 16, so there's about 2,2,500 per square foot.
On a seven or eight, six or seven thousand square foot building, sir?
Yeah.
Just to give you a sense, and Directors, this is in Deep East County where land is cheap and there's lots of access and it was new construction on a flat site, but few engineering issues. In many ways, remodels are harder than new construction.
Remodels also are small. And so there's economy and scale. That's a huge building, so you, you get a discount. It's, you know, you repeat what you, right?
You have lots of garage.
Unfortunately, the construction costs are high.
So is another way to structure this, I'm just trying to brainstorm so we don't end up with delays because we know we don't want to have a delay. I get that. Can we approve this tonight but have a more short-term deliverable that helps us understand what the longer-term ultimate costs are going to be?
I, I think that's eminently achievable in terms of, because what we would be doing is essentially the same thing that we can pursue through a separate process and maybe even with the same person, but with a separate contracting process. And then trying to merge it will be clunky. The contractor will be providing regular updates. My, it's been darn near daily getting this ready. So we will be getting regular updates. And as in stride updates become available, I think it's very clear to everyone the interest in those in stride updates. Those can be provided to the board so that the board is aware and that we, we don't have a all or nothing moment of, and here's your $5 million bill for, for building a station. So I, I believe that with the, the concerns the board has articulated and the understanding of the process, that we can do both of those things, both the interest in moving this project forward as rapidly as prudent and being able to have some estimates as we get more information, informed estimates, not, not swags, based on some of the work that the team would be doing anyway, that would then be feeding the future stages of the process should we move forward. I think that's very reasonable.
If you look, if you look in the proposal and it's broken down by phases, that schematic phase would be, for instance, something you could just do. In, in any case, even if you sign the whole contract, you're, you're not committed to doing the whole contract.
Right.
You can say that that end of this phase, you, you would like us to stop. Now, that schematic phase does include architectural and engineering in the drawings that are given to the cost estimator. And you were saying, well, couldn't you do a kind of more general without like engineering it? Yeah, you could do that, but it just reduces the accuracy of the estimate.
Yeah, but I, I guess I'm not worried about, you know, like the old saying is, you know, you mark with a crayon. Let's see what I said. You, oh yeah, you mark with a, mark with a, or measure with a micrometer, mark with a crayon and cut with an axe.
Yeah.
And the answer is, I'm not worried about micrometers or crayons. I'm worried about axes at this point. In other words, just really big picture, is there something about this? You already mentioned a few of them tonight. But, but see, we haven't heard any of that before. We don't even, you know, so this is literally the first time that at least I've seen any of this. And so when somebody walks in and says, oh, by the way, it's not 3 million, it's 5 million. And, and what I'd heard was there weren't any structural things, which sounds like it's not true. So all those things may be more comfortable with where we're going. And so I guess I would propose that we, especially if we're going to have a committee that can communicate more often with whoever we need to communicate with and isn't necessarily just you. So that we're a little bit more involved early on, at least in the process and thinking about things. That would make me feel more comfortable.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I know the chief always says, I said, well, here, but I'm hearing that we can proceed with this contract, it's in phases and we'll just have an ad hoc committee to communicate. I mean, we don't have to pull this and start again.
Well, yeah, we, we, yes.
We're okay approving as-is and.
But we would like to, I think the committee, you know, I don't know whether. But we would like to, I, I think the committee, you know, I don't know whether it's in the scope of the contract, but would like to have at least a couple hour discussion with somebody about kind of more than you just having to stand your, you know, ad hoc, giving, giving your impressions and things, that's not fair to you.
There, something like that.
Something like that.
The, the contract under phase, excuse me, under phase one, the schematic design, this is on page one, section B of the contract. Meetings attended for three progress meetings with district's building committee and/or board as requested by the district. So it already envisions a, a series of meetings, as obviously staff will be meeting on a much more obvious, but this would be.
Those are structured meetings. I'm available to chief anytime. You just call me up by, I come down to, down Maraga and, and we meet if there's any, any kind of question. But formal meetings with committees or whatever.
Right, I'm saying that distinct from the, the very frequent staff contacts. But I'm, I believe, understanding the district, the, the board's concerns and understanding the uncertainty around a building for which we don't have plans, that was laid out in nineteen sixty-seven by somebody. This feels to me, for the board, of course, as a prudent way to proceed, understanding that we will have a number of touch points, at which point the board can make a more informed decision about, about what we're going to.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
Yep.
That's okay with me.
That's what I propose.
We'd need a motion to approve item eight point ten.
So there's something, maybe a substitute motion here. Okay. Your mo, the motion on the floor is to continue.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that since I made it. And then I'll move that we approve this, but knowing that we do want to have a formal committee, number one, but also take you up on your generous offer to informally meet with the committee, maybe not as a committee because these kind of, the ad hoc committees don't have to have public anything, so they can just go meet with you, can take you to lunch or dinner.
But I think what we meant by three is three other than direct staff, you know? So we're always in communication with the, whoever it is that you assign to us. But if we want to have some sessions in, frankly, if rather than three, you want to throw in four, whatever, it, it's fine. Like, I'm not going to like say, oh, well, you know, there's fourth and this is a big change or. I, I want to make sure the community, that you guys are comfortable with, with what you're doing. So certainly I can add, I can even put that in the contract. We can go from three to four or whatever.
But I, I think of those as sort of the formal, you make a presentation kind of meetings versus talk to, I would consider that the ad hoc committee to be staffish, at least how's that, I realize we're not technically staff, but.
Question, in it, coming up with your proposal, is there a clear understanding relative to the scope of what it is that we're doing?
As, I mean, Chief Lambert and I had many meetings to discuss and to research, like we were researching the various drawings available. I was on the phone with the engineers explaining what we had, making sure that everyone was comfortable. So there's been a lot of talk and also research behind whatever we're showing you. It's not just a.
Scope of the project.
The scope of the project, it's not simply pulled out of the air, if you will.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you stepping in.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Huge difference in my mind.
Me too.
And I confess, you know, I'm learning things for the first time and I, and you've been incredibly helpful, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I think we have a consensus.
So I need a second.
I'll second it.
Oh boy, very nice.
I'll second, I'll second whatever Director Jorgens said. I couldn't repeat it.
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Hassler?
Hi.
Director Dex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens, present Roemer.
Hi.
Item nine point one, election of board officers. We have a staff report.
Good evening, directors. In alignment with the district, District Board's updated rules of procedure, procedure which were adopted in resolution twenty-four oh two, the structure and the election process for board officer positions were revised. Revised procedures state that the district board shall elect the following officers annually or as required, president, vice president, second vice president. You note that previously we had a secretary and treasurer position that were antiquated, that the directors did not carry out those roles. And given that we need at least three members present for a quorum, there wasn't the need for five officer positions because we're two off, two members to be present, at least one of the officers would be present. And there is a prohibition, no director can serve as the president or the vice president for consecutive terms if another director should be interested. However, if no other director were interested, then they could do so. The current officers are listed there, so of note, Director Roemer, Director Hassler could not serve in the same position next year unless everyone else declined. As the directors nominate, because there is no, there's no succession envisioned in our rules of procedure, so it requires a nomination of a, a person for each position. Should a director be nominated for a position they do not choose to fill, it would be appropriate for them to decline the nomination at, at the time of this meeting.
Understood, that I'm relinquishing the position of, of president and nominating Greg Hassler to be next year's president. Do you accept that nomination?
Yeah, I'll accept the nomination.
Thank you.
So do we vote, are we going to vote on these one at a time?
I would recommend a slate, I would recommend a slate, if that's.
Next in line for vice president would be Craig Jorgens, following the tradition that we established last year, correct?
It, it's been customary at times.
Yeah.
I nominate as vice president, Director Jorgens.
I will accept that.
You accept that, okay. I would nominate, I think Steve Danziger is next in line for.
No, there aren't any more positions.
There are no more. Second vice president.
Oh, there is one, sorry.
That's right.
We need three.
That's all we need to do.
We need a second vice president nomination.
We need a second vice president nomination. So I would say that Director Danziger is next in position to take that, so I would nominate Director Danziger as the second vice president.
So just to restate the nominations on the floor, Director Hassler is president, Director Jorgens is vice president, Director Danziger is second vice president.
Correct.
So we need a second to vote.
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Hassler?
Hi.
Director Dex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens? Present Roemer?
Hi.
Give him, give him the gavel.
No, no, he's not resigning right now.
Oh, boy.
Next meeting.
Agenda item nine point two, annual review, approval and appointment of standing and ad hoc committees and district liaisons for twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, directors. The district board directors annually reviews the composition necessity of standing and ad hoc committees as well as appointing new members to these committees and district liaison roles. Per district resolution twenty-four oh two, the district board may create or dissolve committees to ensure alignment with district priorities and efficiency. Of note for the liaisons, there is no requirement to rotate those and given that there have been no changes in the board composition, it's not required. Standing committees, for a definition, are those committees with ongoing subject matter jurisdiction and a fixed and/or a fixed meeting schedule. These committees are subject to the Brown Act. Brown Act, our ad hoc committee or committees are temporary advisory committees serving a limited purpose, they're not perpetual and they're dissolved upon completion of their task. These committees are not subject to the Brown Act, composed of less than a quorum of the governing bodies, so limited to two members. Our standing committees for twenty twenty-four were the audit committee with Director Hassler and Director Dex. Just if we may as room through, is there any interest in changing the composition?
I would nominate both of them if they're willing to serve, they've done excellent jobs so far. That's their areas of professional expertise.
Yes, sir.
I would nominate both of them to continue in those roles.
Understood, and the second one was our ad hoc committee on joint fire prevention with the city of Arinda, currently composed of Director Jorgens and Director Roemer.
I, I have a comment on that one.
Yes, sir.
I represent part of Arinda and I've never served on that. And so depending on the directors, I'd, I'd like to put myself into nomination to be on that committee.
Yeah, we, we don't even have one of those with Maraga, they seem to be especially interested in fire prevention these days. I wonder if they would like to set up a, a committee in Maraga. A similar committee, I think they had expressed interest.
Do you want me to talk to the mayor? Because we chat periodically.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
To see if you would like an ad hoc committee.
So, yeah, we, you know, that'd be an interesting way to be able to have an additional one that we could, we could all be serving.
Can we put together ad hoc committee if we don't know if it has a purpose yet? Because we haven't, because that's where we are, or do we wait till we talk to them?
I would suggest waiting till we.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought, but then I'm like, this is the time we're putting together committees, so.
So the, the question that was posed by Director Danziger was, and so there are two choices here. Should we add Director Danziger or a third director, whomever, to the committee would no longer be an ad hoc committee? It would now, what would be, but it'd be subject to the Brown Act and, and would require noticing and, and district staff support to do so. From a staff perspective, I wouldn't recommend that. So the other alternative is that either one of the directors who are currently on the ad hoc committee could relinquish their position to a different director or should we have three candidates for two seats, we could hold a vote and, and determine who would be seated on that committee going forward to maintain its ad hoc nature.
Can we postpone this particular one until we find out if there's a, if there's a committee that we could have in Maraga?
There's nothing to prevent the directors from addressing committee formation and composition and dissolution at any time. We've dissolved committees in stride many times, so, so there's nothing that would require action tonight. Should there, there be an interest in determining whether or not Maraga would like to establish a separate committee or participate in this one or, or some, some other derivative.
So you could, you could simply continue the, the, the item on the ad hoc committee. The next section.
Just a question, so the suggestions were having two ad hoc committees or potentially having one joint committee with Arinda and Maraga?
Sorry, that, that would depend on what Maraga wanted to do. Because I, I don't think it's unreasonable to anticipate that if you were to approach the mayor and ask if they were interested in meeting in a manner similar to the meeting that we already hold with Arinda, for someone to say, well, why don't we just all meet at once since the subject matter is the same? They, of note, they're aware of the two by two.
Yeah.
And at the triage meeting and, and other settings, they have not expressed an interest in participating.
One, just, I mean, fairly obvious point, but as soon as you get to three members of the board, that's a quorum of the full board.
Yeah.
And so it's not a committee at that point.
It's a big deal.
The entire board is, so I'm, I'm.
I, I think it makes more sense to have only two members and continue as an ad hoc committee, the focus is liaison. I'm willing to continue to serve. I kind of anticipated the Director Danziger, you know, that committee to do the reconstruction of forty-five is going to be, involve a fair amount of time and commitment. So I frankly thought that you would appreciate not can be on the Arinda committee. I'm willing to continue to serve on that, but if the other members of the board, they could be more appropriate for Director Danziger to serve on, then I'm.
Yeah, I just felt that I.
I'm willing to offer my nomination, but if people would prefer to have Director Danziger on multiple committees, then, you know, that's not going to, that's not going to ruin my day. I want Director Danziger to feel as included as he wants to.
Just, it just, after, I've been on the board for six years, I've never, I've done, you know, almost everything, I've been on the, uh, audit. I, I've done a lot of it, I've never been on that one, so that's all. It's okay.
Yeah, I've only been on one.
I think, haven't I? So. Yeah, I, I don't want to turn this into a fight, no, of course. I mean, I'm, I'm willing.
I'm willing to accede to whatever the board thinks is more appropriate in terms of individual labor. And if we want to defer that to next month, we can do it or we can vote tonight.
I'm, I'm indifferent, whatever, all of you guys figure out what you want to do.
I'll just make my comment, we, we trade around the presidency and the vice president and all of that. And it seems like if a member's not been on a committee and wants to be on one, we should take that.
Seems good to me.
Seriously, because it's six years, I mean, that's.
Okay, so you'd say.
I would say, I would say give it to Steve, I mean, that would be.
Okay with me.
Kind of, but I don't know, this director sounds like.
You okay?
I'm okay, I'm giving up my.
Nope, who's giving up their spot? Yeah, I don't know who's giving up their spot, that's what I know.
Well, no, no, I would, I would, I would nominate Director Jorgens to continue on. I think he's done a wonderful job on that liaison. So I would rather have Jorgens and Danziger on both of those committees than to bump either one of you.
You know what, if, if you want to be on the station forty-five, you can do that, I mean, it's okay. I mean, since I think you anticipated to be on this one, if you want to go to the forty-five, I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm fine.
Whatever you want to do.
That's good by me.
I'd rather have you on forty-four.
Are you willing to do both? Steve, you willing to do both?
Yeah, are you willing to do both? Yeah.
Okay, that's easy.
I will, but if you wanted to do forty-five, that's okay, if you don't want to, okay. Chief Lambert, what do you think?
All right. So we have nominations for Director Jorgens and Director Danziger to be on the joint fire prevention committee. And then for forming station forty-five facilities, we have Director Danziger and.
Director Roemer.
I believe.
No, no.
Director Jorgens.
Greg.
Jorgens and Danziger.
Director Jorgens.
Hey, can I, I just have a question, dude. When is the two by two meeting, do you know what day?
When is it?
Day?
It's completely flexible.
Usually you spend about fifteen minutes trying to get everybody's schedule.
Okay, okay, it's not a set, it's not a set.
It's not a set thing, and it only happens every.
They try to do it about.
Two or three months.
Every two months or so.
Oh, okay.
But it's a, it's a big deal to try to get everybody's schedule on the same day.
Okay.
And so just for clarity, we have Director Danziger and Director Jorgens on the forty-five facility.
Yes.
And then for district liaisons, currently we have liaisons to LAFCO, the Arinda City Council, the Maraga Town Council, Director Danziger to LAFCO, Director Jorgens to Arinda, City Council Director Hassler to Maraga Town Council. So any interest in changing those or continuing them?
I'll be, I'll be happy to give up LAFCO, but it's, it's all, I just let everyone know about that one. It's, it's, it's online, I can't keep it, but I'll just let you know, it's online. There's no public meeting you have to go to. I usually, all I do, I, I, I have tuned into their actual Zoom meeting, but usually I just read their notes following the meeting and see if there's anything and you. I think there's been one meeting where there's something I reported, so there's not a lot to do. If somebody else wants to be that liaison, I'm fine with that.
Happy to have you be that one.
Happy to have you be that one.
And then for Arinda City Council, Maraga Town Council, no change from the directors.
I, I'm happy to continue with Maraga.
I'm happy to do Arinda.
So the, the motion then would need to be made to continue the audit committee is currently constituted Director Hassler and Director Jex, adjust the joint fire prevention with city of Arinda to reflect Director Jorgens and Director Danziger. Create the ad hoc station forty-five committee with Director Danziger and Director Jorgens. And then carry forward the district liaisons with Director Danziger to LAFCO, Director Jorgens to Arinda, Director Hassler to Maraga. If there is a motion and a.
So moved. For what he said.
I'll move that. I'll second that.
Okay, and before I take the roll call vote, we did not open public comment for nine point one for the election of the board of directors. And so we should open public comment.
Let's do so.
For the election of the board officers. And so we do not have any public comment on that item. And then so opening public comment for nine point two of the ad hoc committee, standing committees. We do not have any public comment for that item. So I'll take a roll call. Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Hassler?
Hi.
Director Dex?
Hi.
Director Jorgens? Present Roemer?
Hi.
Former President Roemer.
Item nine point three, approval of memorandum of understanding between district and United Professional Firefighters, Contra Costa County.
Good evening, directors. Let me move to the next question. Thank you. So got a report for all of you about our negotiations with local twelve thirty. Going to give you a overview of the bargaining history, very high level overview, and then go into the key terms of the proposed MOU that is on the agenda for approval tonight. So the parties, the district and local twelve thirty had been bargaining for approximately one year. We met for the first time on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to negotiate ground rules. And substantive bargaining began on January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Parties have had twelve bargaining sessions, including a pre-impasse mediation that we held on November sixth, twenty twenty-four. The parties were, were not at impasse, hence the, the pre-impasse qualifier. But both parties thought it would be good to, to bring in a third party from the state mediation and conciliation services to come and, and help us resolve some outstanding issues. And they did, the mediation was very productive and led to a tentative agreement after some back and forth post-mediation. And that TA allows us to move forward with the proposed MOUs that are on the agenda tonight. And that TA allows us to move forward with the proposed MOUs that are on the agenda tonight. Local twelve thirties chief negotiator signed that TA on December tenth, twenty twenty-four, and notified the District a few days later, on December thirteenth, that the Local twelve thirty membership had ratified that TA. So the key terms for this proposed MOU are as follows. So three-year duration to the proposed contract, starting July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Parties negotiated salary increases as follows, three salary increases. The first, effective upon ratification and adoption of the MOU, a five percent increase to salaries for the unit. Another five percent, July first, twenty twenty-five, and then the third, five percent increase, July one, twenty twenty-six. Parties also negotiated a reduction in what, classic employees? Or employees who are at the three percent at fifty retirement formula? But those employees contribute to the employer's share of retirement. So under the current contract, employees contribute nine percent to that employer's share. And the parties negotiated a decrease in that contribution from nine percent to seven percent. So two percent reduction effective upon adoption of the MOU. And the following economic enhancements, all of them are effective upon adoption of the MOU. Retiree health savings account, parties negotiated an increase in the district's contribution to that retiree health savings account from a hundred dollars to a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month. Uniform allowance, the parties negotiated an increase to the district's contribution from fifty-five dollars a month to sixty-one dollars a month. On health insurance for active employees, the parties negotiated an increase in the district's contributions for healthcare to the flat dollar equivalent of ninety percent of the twenty twenty-five Kaiser Region One rates. So as a flat dollar amount, it will not increase as the Kaiser rates increase during the life of the contract. For dental for active employees, the parties negotiated an increase in the district's contributions to dental to cover the cost of a more robust dental plan. The, the cost is, is, the cost for this and on all the other items that I've discussed are contained in the staff report. The, the increase to dental is a relatively small increase in cost to the district, but it covers the cost for a more comprehensive plan. One-time payments, so the parties negotiated two different one-time payments for members of Local twelve thirty. One is a payment based on classification. So each classification represented by Local twelve thirty and covered under the MOU gets a specific one-time payment. So for example, captains get one thing, engineers get another. And the way that we arrived at the value for those one-time payments, which are, you can see the value in the staff report. But they were calculated by looking at the top step for the relevant classification. And top step salary for that class, FLSA pay, fire retirement allotment pay, holiday pay, and uniform allowance over the six-month period of July one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the value of the payment is the difference between the value of those components of compensation for that six-month period and what those, what that class, the given class, would have received in those categories if a five percent salary increase had been effective July one, twenty twenty-four, and the increase in uniform allowance had been effective at the same date. And whatever classification you were in on July one, twenty twenty-four determines which payment you get. And if you promote out of the unit at some point in that six-month period, you would get a prorated amount, the one-time payment. And you also must be employed by the district when the payment is dispersed, which will be February tenth, twenty twenty-five. The other component, the other one-time payment is different. It is related to overtime, and it is given, it's a variable calculation and is given to employees on an individual basis. So that payment will reflect the overtime hours that employees worked over that six-month period at the rate of pay that they were receiving on July one, twenty twenty-four. And takes the difference between that and what they would have received, again, if a five percent increase had been effective on July one. Not all aspects or kinds of overtime were counted in this. So specifically, strike team and backfill for strike team overtime was not counted in that calculation. That will also be paid if the board approves this MOU. It will be paid on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. And the last piece of note to the MOU has to do with the single role ambulance staffing plan. The parties negotiated a side letter that is attached to the MOU that outlines the terms for a phased implementation of a plan to go to a different staffing model in the district's current ambulance staffing model. One that would use single role EMS employees to staff the ambulances and move away from having firefighters staff the ambulances. The side letter outlines that plan and also provides that the parties will continue to work together to implement that plan. It also creates a standing committee between labor and management to continue discussions of the operational details of that plan, but excludes discussions over compensation, which the side letter recognizes that the parties have negotiated and completed negotiations over all aspects of compensation related to this plan. The side letter also provides for the creation of two new classifications, single role EMTs and senior single role paramedics. Those classifications would be represented by Local twelve thirty under a separate MOU. That MOU is also on the agenda for you tonight. And the third classification under that MOU is the single role paramedic classification, which does currently exist and is currently covered under the fire MOU. The side letter of agreement would move that classification into this new single role paramedic EMS MOU. I have more on that, the terms of that MOU, but that's the next agenda item, so I'll hold. And if there are any questions at this point.
I have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I want to say personally, as my first time through what is a very complicated system, I I was expecting a great performance by you, Luke, and I think you came through it. So I want to express my appreciation for how helpful you were throughout this entire extended and complicated process.
Thank you very much, Director Romer.
I agree.
I think you guys did a superb job under challenging and difficult circumstances, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. We had a really, really good team. It was very much a team effort.
I know, I appreciate it.
And Vince Wells is chief negotiator for Local twelve thirty, also a great partner in this process.
We, you know, my own, my own personal feeling is, is that, you know, there's a reason why you have an adversary relationship. But that doesn't mean you can't have grave youthful stack infection, which I do for Jacob Arilla and Dan O'Body, and I appreciate all the work that you put into this as well.
I need you to unmute your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I need to repeat any of that? Everybody's, everybody's heard enough from me, haven't they?
Would you like to open?
Glad I'm no longer president.
Would you like to open public comment?
Yes, I would.
So public comment is open for item nine point three? We do not have any hands?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, hey, just real quick, I appreciate all, everything that Luke presented is accurate. I just wanted to add a couple of things about our side of the table and what our perspectives were. You know, it was, there was an attempt for us to try to start early, so we ended on time. And, you know, our contract expires June, June thirtieth. And so we do appreciate the fact that we didn't get there. Luke and I had a lot of conversations about trying to get there. And so we appreciate your willingness to add something to the retroactivity of this because of the fact that we went longer. Our goals and objective are usually, with me being the president, I'm retired from ComFire. And at one time, we represented six fire agencies, Maraga, Arinda, Real Day Hercules, Elserito, Pano, and East Contra Costa. And so we've reduced, I'm sure you guys have heard, we're about to annex Real Day Hercules. We've annexed East Contra Costa. But our goal is always at the table to try to get parity among all our members. They all pay the same amount of dues. Like I said, I'm a retired fire captain from ComFire, so we shoot to try to make sure when I'm negotiating Elserito or Pano at the time, before they came in, always trying to get that. So that's our goals and objective, just so you know. And so that's what we worked to try to achieve in this contract. And we understand, and I understand this probably better than most of my members, is we, we're dealing with city council members, board supervisors, and elected board of directors, and everybody's got a different opinion about priorities. And so we think where we, where we landed was where this board was willing to support. And so we'd appreciate your support moving forward and accepting this contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
And we do, so we do not have any hands raised?
So I move, we approve the contract as stated.
I second.
Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Hassler.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
President Romer.
Hi.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Director.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, though.
And so we are now on to item nine point four.
So, directors, this item is the MOU for the single role EMS professionals that I adverted to earlier. This MOU would cover three classifications. The two new classifications that are being created, senior single role paramedic and single role EMT, as well as single role paramedic. And the term of the MOU runs concurrently with the other Local twelve thirty MOU. This would be an adjunct of Local twelve thirty and represented by them. The classifications in this MOU are non-safety classifications for the purposes of Cessara. And the single role paramedic and EMT classifications are for limited-term positions, three-year limited term with the possibility for extending to five at the discretion of the fire chief. The, the structure of this MOU is modeled on what San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District, their MOU for their single role paramedic classifications. They also carved them out of their fire, from their fire MOU, and created a contract very similar to the one that is before you tonight. The increases in salary that are contemplated in the MOU are track what the, the two five percent increases in July of twenty twenty-five and July of twenty twenty-six. And the overtime provisions and paid time off provisions, the accrual rates for things like vacation are consistent with what the district does for their other forty-hour employees. These classifications will participate in retiree health savings account. And though unlike the firefighters and the other Local twelve thirty MOU, they are not eligible for the fire retirement allotment pay. Those, I think, are the key provisions for this contract, and open it up for any questions if there are.
Anybody have questions? None for me.
We go ahead and open public comment. And we do not have any hands raised for public comment.
I move, we approve the memorandum of understanding as stated.
I second.
Director Danziger.
Aye.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. President Romer.
Hi.
Item nine point five. Approval of memorandum of understanding between the District and Maraga Arinda Fire Chief Officers Association.
Okay, so, directors, a brief overview of the negotiations here with the battalion chiefs. Started bargaining with them in February twenty twenty-four. We had thirteen bargaining sessions with them and reached a TA with them on December eleventh. The TA was also ratified by the membership on that day. The key terms of this MOU, I, I won't take you through all the details of it because it's, in terms of substance, basically identical to what the, the MOU provisions for the Local twelve thirty MOU. The only differences here are the single role staffing plan doesn't relate to the battalion chiefs in the same way, and so there's, there's no provisions in this contract regarding that. And uniform allowance, it's the same increase, a six-dollar increase per month, but the, the initial allowance is different for the battalion chiefs. Those are the only notable differences between the two MOUs.
And, and the one-time payment?
The one-time payments, similar, same formulas, but yes, the values are going to be different because of the, you know, differences in the, the base salary for those classifications. But yes, same concepts. They also have different overtime codes, but for that calculation as well, strike team and backfill are being excluded. That's it.
Okay.
Or discussion? An open public comment? The public comment is open, and we do not have any hands raised?
I move, we approve nine point five as stated.
Second.
Director Danziger.
Aye.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. President Romer.
Hi.
Item nine point six, approval of unrepresented employee handbook, effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
So, I don't have any slides on this, but suffice it, suffice it to say, it's the, the recommendation is to bring up the unrepresented salary increase that was given in November to bring that up by two percent, so a total of a five percent increase in their salary. And then same increases in economic enhancements that were given in the other contracts are also part of this recommendation.
Questions?
None for me.
And so we will open public comment on item nine point six? We do not have any public comment?
I move, we approve nine point six as stated.
I second that.
Director Danziger.
Aye.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. President Romer.
Hi.
Any committee reports?
No.
None?
We do have a request for the future agenda, maybe we don't.
Not that, I do not have a request noted.
We did, but I think.
Yeah, it's gone. We're good. I move, we adjourn.
So, second.
Director Danziger.
I'm sorry, where am I voting then?
So we're, motion to adjourn.
Oh. Come on.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
Aye.
President Romer.
Aye.
Time is eight fifty-one. Congratulations, Chief Miniker.
Yes, congratulations, chief. Your last one.
Yeah. They got to hire a U-Haul now to help you out.